All right, I'm going to call the City Council Caucus meeting to order for June 23rd, 2014. If the clerk would read the first item on the agenda.
Item number one, under final consideration, an ordinance amending Chapter 167 of the Administrative Code regarding commercial property inspections.
Okay, we are going to pull this from the agenda. We will revisit this in a couple of weeks. Item number two.
Item number two, an ordinance amending Chapter 210 of the Administrative Code regarding rental certificates.
Okay, we had a public hearing on this, so at this point, without objection on consent. Item number three.
Item number three, an ordinance amending Chapter 248 of the Administrative Code regarding oversized vehicles.
We also had a public hearing on this, without objection on consent. Item number four.
Item number four, an ordinance amending Chapter 248 of the Administrative Code regarding parking meters.
Again, without objection on consent. Item number five.
Item number five, under original consideration, an ordinance amending Chapter 186 Parks and Recreation, introduced only with a resolution calling for a public hearing regarding changes to Chapter 186 of the Administrative Code regarding fees for services at city parks.
Also discussed in committee, without objection on consent. Item number six.
Item number six, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of audit results for fiscal year 2013 for the City of Schenectady.
All right, this will be a roll call vote. Item number seven.
Item number seven, a resolution authorizing the sale of parcel 30.76-2-25.
This is vacant land, without objection on consent. Item number eight.
Item number eight, a resolution authorizing the sale of 219 Brandywine Avenue.
Discussed in claims, without objection on consent. Item number nine.
Item number nine, a resolution authorizing the sale of 415 Summit Ave.
Also discussed in claims, without objection on consent. Item number 10.
Item number 10, a resolution authorizing the sale of 1062 Bridge Street.
Also discussed in claims, without objection on consent. Item number 11.
Item number 11, a resolution authorizing the sale of 1177 Hildebrandt Avenue.
Also discussed in claims, without objection on consent. Item number 12.
Item number 12, a resolution authorizing the sale of parcel 49.70-2-6.1.
And also, again, vacant land, without objection on consent. Item number 13.
Item number 13, a resolution authorizing the sale of 1664 Foster Avenue.
Also discussed in claims, without objection on consent. Item number 14.
Item number 14, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a claim brought by Sarah Couch.
Also discussed in claims, without objection on consent. Item number 15.
Item number 15, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a tax surchargeary proceedings regarding 161 J Street.
Also discussed in claims, without objection on consent. Item number 16.
Item number 16, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a tax surchargeary proceeding regarding 844 Hampton Avenue.
Also discussed in claims, without objection on consent. And then we have one item for unanimous consent.
A resolution proclaiming June 27th, 2014 as Anoop Jalata, King of Bahance Day in the City of Schenectady. I try.
All right, Mr. Mutavaren, would you move that? All right, seconded by Mr. Erickson, all in favor? Aye. And then to move it to the consent agenda, Mr. Mutavaren again, okay, Ms. Porterfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, if there is nothing else to come before the City Council Caucus, I'll declare this portion of the meeting closed, and we will move on to the City Council meeting for June 23rd, 2014. Please rise for the invocation by Reverend Dave Chitram of the Shereganish Mendir of Schenectady.
Thank you, Madam Chair, beloved brothers and sisters, a very, very good evening. With our sincere respect, faith, and love, may we as one family bow our heads in prayers and pure, holy, divine Lord, God of gods, salutations and prostrations unto thee. Gracious Father, we thank you for this beautiful gift of life. We thank you for the world and its abundant resources. We thank you for all your pervading, sweet divine presence. Please, Lord, bless this most distinguished mayor, the diligent councilors, and the rest of the dutiful assembly with the energy, wisdom, and resolve to accomplish the goals and objectives of this undertaking this evening. Sweet Lord, kindly remove the shortcomings, misunderstandings, and grievances of each and every resident of this city. May our minds, senses, and bodies perceive and execute that which is positive, healthy, and noble, so that we can create an atmosphere of peace, joy, and blessed in. Adorable Lord, please forgive us for any mistakes, offenses, and sins we have committed in our thoughts, words, and deeds knowingly and unknowingly. God bless this assembly, God bless this city, God bless America. Thank you all very much.
I'll ask Marva Isaacs to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if the clerk would call the roll.
Ms. Perazzo.
President.
Ms. Porterfield. Mr. Erickson.
Here.
Mr. Kozier.
Here.
Mr. Riggi. Mr. Mutavaren.
Present.
Ms. King.
Present. All right, we have no out-of-order resolutions, we have no public hearings, and at this point, I will not ask for approval of the minutes. The draft minutes are available in your packets, but as you can imagine, with all the people who spoke at the last meeting, it's taken the clerk's office a little while to pull that together, so they will have that for us in a couple of weeks. So, again, you have the draft minutes there. Communications and petitions.
Communications presented to the City Council for Monday, June 23rd, 2014. Under official, from the mayor, a list of appointments stated June 23rd, 2014. Under general, there are none. Under petitions, a petition asking the application for a gaming license to operate a casino on the site of the former alcohol plant in Schenectady be disapproved by the City Council with 173 signatures.
Okay, thank you. Committee reports. Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you. For Health and Recreation, a couple of weeks ago, Reverend Phil Grixby came to us about wanting to put some equipment into Wallingford Park, and I just want to just give an update that that's still going on, we're trying to get that done. He's prepared to write the check, and we just have to work through it so that it gets in there. And I know it's summertime, people have been inquiring because they want to use the park, so we're still moving forward with that, and hopefully that should be done within the next couple of weeks, and the next time I can report, they've been installed. The other thing is about another park, which is Jerry Burrell Park, and the Office of General Services has been working with the Hamilton Hill Neighborhood Association about doing some renovations in the park, and so I just want to announce that mostly for the people who live in and around the park that we would like their input on this. It's talking about increasing the lighting in that park, removing all old playground equipment, perhaps creating a fenced-in soccer field, and installing a handball court. So if anyone has any comments regarding that, especially those who live adjacent to the park, they can call Vicki at 372-6469. Again, it's Vicki at 372-6469 if they have any input about those proposed plans to improve Jerry Burrell Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Mr. Riggi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Claims is met as usual, and we have a lot of surteraries has been the case, and I know some of the council people are very concerned, and I am too. I think it's time that we should at least start discussing doing a revow on the City of Schenectady, because there's people that are paying a disproportionate share of their taxes, because some people are granted relief, and those that don't grieve, they're not granted relief, so it shifts the burden onto those people. I think it's time, and I'd like to see it in a committee cycle soon, at least for discussion, get it to the appropriate committee where we can discuss doing a citywide revow. Maybe we won't need to gather all the information again, as we did in 2008, but I think it's something that's needed, and I think some of my colleagues feel the same way, because it does shift the burden. Every time we grant relief to someone, like we are tonight, that means it's shifting the burden to all those others who don't grieve. So I think it's something I would like to see discussed in committee, at least try to get the ball rolling. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, if that case, we will move to privilege of the floor regarding the legislative agenda. I have three people signed up to speak. Jason Plank.
Madam President, City Council Mayor Pro Tim, one of them is on the rental certificates. You know, we spoke last time with the public hearings. I think this is just one way of shifting cost. It has been for 30 years, it's been absolutely for free for the landlords to be able to get it, and I think it's totally wrong that the city is now taking this over. And the only excuse that they had was is that the city is much stronger than the Section 8 vouchers. Well, if that is the case, then you need to do it every single year, just not the first year. So I just think it's just a shifting of cost. Another one is the agenda item on the audit. The audit itself basically stated in page 70 that you're complying with all federal and state regulations regarding contracts and so forth. So, and you're not. You have denied the affirmative action for both minorities, persons with disabilities are completely not even there. You're not even meeting goals, you're not even discussing it. We have been asking for the last eight years for an economic disparity study, and you haven't even begun. We've asked that there would be a change in the contract with Mary Kuduski to talk with, to coordinate with the ADA coordinator in the city, and that has not been done. That's been asked since 2008, and it has not been done. Last week, the City Council went into an executive session on the affirmative action board, and I believe it was totally wrong and totally illegal. The City Council, at any point in time on affirmative action, cannot interfere with an investigation. They can ask for an investigation, but they cannot interfere, it's part of an Article 78 proceedings under the executive branch. They can ask for that, for the results of the investigation, and those results then would turn around and be made public, so therefore, the City Council would not need to go into executive session. And so at this point...
Mr. Plank, this is regarding the legislative agenda.
Yeah, it is on the legislative agenda, and it's going back to the original piece, because we're not allowed to speak last week, so this is part of the legislative agenda from last week, and it's part of that piece. And I've also contacted Bob Freeman, you're very well aware of the open public meeting law. You've got to be able to have some kind of peace, and that's where we're at, and it's part of that legislative agenda, and it goes with everything else, what you're doing tonight. It goes with the audit, with the affirmative action, and so forth. You have to be able to come to an agreement of having open dialogue. It's called part of your self-evaluation. And then part of that self-evaluation, which is 28 CFR, Part 35, Section 105, specifically states you're supposed to do a self-evaluation of the entire policies and procedures, and you have not done it. You have not done it for the last, and we've asked for it ever since, and even the City Council members have asked for it. Thank you.
Thank you. David Giaccoloni.
Good evening, Madam President, council members, other dignitaries. I really dislike coming here so often and nagging you guys, but sometimes I really just think someone's not doing their job. And today, you had on the legislative agenda your parking meter legislation, and those amendments were filled with so many grammatical and syntactical errors, had sentences without verbs, it had just, it had total inconsistencies about what term it would use, it said can when it meant may, just things that, I mean, a high school dropout would be embarrassed about, much less a lawyer saying, "I've read this, and it's okay." So, I just don't know, because I've told, I've written to you guys, and I've said that this particular piece was a jumble, it was just a total verbal mess, and it came, and it came in the exact same way. It's not just the corporation council's job to make sure these statutes read in a way that parse, that the general public can understand what it says. It's your job, and your job, and your job, and your job. And yet, nobody thought that, oh, well, Mr. Giaccoloni, what would he know about how to read a text and how to read a statute? And so, once again, ignored. I wasted, I didn't waste it, I spent my entire day writing, rewriting what you just passed tonight, and I hope somebody will look at it and say, "You know what? We should have changed this, because it's embarrassing." So, I have copies here for the council members, and one for mayor. So, I'd be thrilled if I don't have to see you guys in this room for another year or two, and just see you at the park and say hi. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary McLean.
I was going to address the issue, but I was waiting for another day. Agenda item number two, amending Chapter 210 regarding rental certificates. I have read the printout for rental certificates. Letter N on page 10 reads, "Exterior property areas. Yards, courts, and lots shall be kept clean and free of garbage, refuse, and other conditions which may threaten the health and safety of the occupant. To date, a clean exterior has not been a mandate for tenants or landlords. I think the exterior conditions of a property should be included with every inspection.
This is your time, Mrs. McLean.
I don't want to disturb Mr. Kozier.
I'm going to go down there.
Okay.
You got it, what I'm doing.
If the grounds are not kept clean, rewrote the rental certificate. Over the past nine years, I have been all over the city carrying petitions for one thing or another. I see many beautiful places. Last week, I was in a section of town that I did not see one scrap of paper, and that is not exaggerating. Renters need to be as responsible as homeowners. We all need to pull our weight, because we all live on this planet. The code change will help combat the litter problem in the city, and councils should vote for the change. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have no one else signed up to speak related to the legislative agenda. I'll declare this portion of the meeting closed and entertain a motion to approve the legislative agenda. Ms. Porterfield, seconded by Mr. Kozier, all in favor? Aye. And then we have the one roll call vote.
Item number six, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of audit results for fiscal year 2013 for the City of Schenectady.
The clerk would call the roll.
Do we want to move?
Oh, wait, excuse me, would someone move that? I'm sorry. Okay, Mr. Kozier, seconded by Ms. Perazzo, all in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Ms. Perazzo. Ms. Porterfield.
Aye.
Mr. Erickson.
So, regarding the audit, this year, as we do every year, we have the audit proposed as, presented to the City Council, we ask lots of questions, and usually it moves through with varying comments of interest based on the findings of the audit, and we move happily forward. This year, where there was quite a few questions, and different members of the council, we're able to ask lots of things, I think, who are different questions than we've asked in the past, and so, one of the things I've found is that occasionally, some of the questions that were asked, which I think are very good, relevant questions, sometimes were not within the scope of the audit, and it puts us in a situation where you say, "All right, well, that wasn't conducted, yet it's a good question, so how do we verify that these things are being checked?" So, it is my opinion that going forward, we should probably have the council involved in maybe putting an RFP together, so that some of the questions we intend to ask would be included in the scope of the audit, and it might make the process go a little bit smoother next time around. But that being said, I think that the audit has good results, I think what was involved in the scope of the audit came back positive, and the city staff and the finance department did a fine job, and so I will vote yes.
Mr. Kozier.
Yes.
Mr. Riggi.
Yes, I had questions also, and I asked to Mr. Kusak, and I also spoke to Ms. DeGenova about them, and they were answered. I would like to see maybe more recommendations to us, but I guess that isn't the scope of the audit, so I'm understanding more as we're going along, but I do have some questions on amortizing our retirement fund this year, which we did, and we kicked that can down the road. But it is what it is, and, you know, the audit was positive. I'm kind of concerned if that surplus is actually a surplus, but anyhow, I vote yes on this.
Mr. Mutavaren.
Thank you. I just have a couple of concern, and I have asked questions, and I've asked for a couple of reports, and to date, I have not received any of those reports, and I was asking for those reports just to make me more comfortable to vote for this audit this evening. At this point, I have not received any of these reports after several communication to the auditors, and I am going to abstain from voting tonight. Thank you.
Ms. King.
I will vote aye. I think this was a very positive audit, and something we should be proud of, so I, as I said, I vote aye.
Six in favor, none opposed, one abstain.
So, it's approved. All right, we will now move then to privilege of the floor regarding city business. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr.? Nobody opposed, I'm sorry.
I said, none opposed, one abstain. Yes. No, sorry.
Okay, so we will move to privilege of the floor regarding city business. I have seven people signed up. Oh, excuse me. No, we did, yes, we did approve the consent agenda. All right, first person to speak is Joe Rodriguez.
Just want to say, here I am, once again, speaking from Oyster Street. Spring has passed us, we're into the summer. I was told that we're going to get some accomplishments. I don't see anything, but I do have to say that today I ran into some difficulties with the code enforcement, and I have to honestly say that the supervisor and a couple of inspectors were very polite, very professional, and explained the whole situation to myself. I know a lot of people come up here and want to criticize, and it's not fair, and they want to criticize rent certificates and all this, and if it's moving the city forward, I don't see what the problem is. But I think that a lot of people in the sanitation department, southern other agencies deserve a big applause and everything, because a lot of them, when they come down our street, even though it's considered the hill, or whatever you want to call it, they, the sanitation department really picks up the trash. I mean, they don't spill it on the street anymore like they did in the past. And again, speaking on behalf of the inspectors, I didn't know any of them guys, but I always suspected going there would get some hard-nosed person or something, reject you or something. But they took the time out to explain everything and work with me, and I want to say thank you so much for the great work that you all accomplished with the city employees. Other than that, I can't say nothing else, but one more thing. Ms. Perazzo, you're always talking about your graffiti group, but we have a lot of graffiti on the corner of Hannah Brad and Oyster Street, on that big red building that I painted a couple of years ago, now the graffiti's back. Maybe your crew can come in and take care of that. And the end block, 45 Oyster Street, I did come to speak to Mr. Schelling, whatever, Eric. I asked him, Mr. Bernie from Vale Cemetery cleaned it up, put a pile. I asked him two weeks ago today if they could come and pick that garbage up, because there's little kids running around, and you're talking about empty paint. This is when it was being dumped, when I told you a couple of years ago, when they put that pile of dirt. Now you've got piles of stuff that the cemetery cleaned up, and you've got kids running around picking up these cans of paints or whatever people were dumping. So if they could just come and pick that up, it'd be a big blessing, because I've been cutting the grass there, and I can't cut the grass, because I have no room to cut the grass. Now the grass is knee-high. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Plank.
Madam President, City Council Mayor Pro Tim, to answer Councilwoman Mary McPorterfield's question, I just told Vicki, we need curb cuts at Jerry Burrell Park. We've been asking those for the last 10 years. Also, too, is Georgia Dix and Albany Street, that also needs a curb cut. There was about $110,000 that we got that I helped with the city out of community development block grant money 10 years ago. Out of that $110,000, Georgia Dix was supposed to be done, but it just didn't, they ran out of money. And we've been asking for it for the last 10 years, and also along Crane Street, and we're also asking along Hewitt Street, we need the curb cuts to get over to Quackenbush. We still need the curb cuts. They're, I understand they're $3,000 per curb cut, but they need to be in. I mean, you've got an accessible, you've got an accessible playground in Jerry Burrell, and nobody can get to it. A wheelchair can't get to it. It's very extremely difficult. Some of the curb cuts are up to your kneecaps, so, you know, we need to be able to maneuver. Also, yesterday was, on June 22nd, was the 15th anniversary on the Olmsted decision, and the city still has not done a study on affordable and accessible housing, and it continues to accept applications for townhouses, luxury houses, and so forth, and we still do not have an affordable and accessible housing within this community. So, we still need the Olmsted decision, we still need to be able to have some kind of portion of that put together. To piggyback back on the affirmative actions, it's a run out of time, when the Gazette only wrote half of the story, the other half is persons with disabilities. It's a Section 503 compliance. DOL just put out new regulations as of March, that 7% of all the contracts, federal contracts have to have personal disabilities participations. So, I mean, when Mary Kuduski says, "Well, I've been trying to get minority participation, getting, trying..." That's only half the story. She's only doing half of her job. She's still in violation. And then to say, "Well, we put out a application for digging ditches, you know, laying the pipe." Well, that's only half the story. You still have a flag person, you still have somebody who needs to drive the truck... You still have a flag person, you still have somebody who needs to drive the truck, you still need somebody to make payroll, you still need somebody to supervise the site, you still need a human resource person to manage the site. So there's many other job titles in that piece that that person could be able to qualify to meet the minority and for personal with disabilities participation. So, and then Merrick Juszczyk has the full authority. There's, and I'm running out of time, but she's got, you have to designate the person, she has to know the information and implement it, and then she has to have the ability to enforce it. She's got the enforcement power. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Benone.
Tony Benone Bellevue, what a difference two weeks makes, huh? I haven't heard anything about agreement with the pool on Front Street yet with YWCA. And I got last year's resolution that was passed, and a few things bothered me was, one that says, "Whereas the YWCA agrees to keep the pool facility open for at least two hours a day for every day in the contract period." They can keep that pool open only two hours a day if they want to? I mean, that's not fair. And what happens if someone goes down? Do they have to pay the full price for the two hours that, just for swimming, two hours? Another thing, it says, "The YWCA may," this is the agreement, "YWCA may offer the use of the pool facility to its members and invite these other than general public." So in other words, they could keep it open for two hours and then invite their friends down. I think something's wrong someplace in this. And they were supposed to have an agreement 60 days before the 14th of June. I don't know if there's any agreement, you know, if they contacted you people. Last year, it was adopted on July 8th. Now, I know that pool was opened up before July 8th. Now, are they operating the pool without an agreement with us? That's another thing I want to know. And are they charging more every year for day camps and stuff for kids to go down? I'd like to know that. And I didn't speak on casinos last week, because a couple of weeks ago, there was a few people here, but I'm totally against it. And like Ray Gillan said in the paper, he said that, when the Army Engineers said that it's in the flood plain, Ray Gillan says that the alcohol never lost production because of floods down there. Ray Gillan's got to realize that. A lot of the alcohol plant was across every boulevard, going up Knott Street, where the old Ramada Inn was, where the car wash was, that was the old tank shop, across the street where Golub's is, all the way up, going up the hill towards St. Anthony's. That was all alcohol, so. I know my father did lose work during floods, because he worked down there. I know he did lose work. I had to go up to Ellis Hospital today. I rode down Van Franken Avenue, and I thought the garbage trucks were supposed to take brooms and shovels with them. From the curb to the middle of the street, there was a whole mess of garbage, looked like a bag broke, and the truck was way down. They never picked it up. And coming out of the garage at Ellis Hospital, you take a left on Ulster Street, because you can't take a right, and then you take your first right on Cortland Street, I think it's Cortland, and then you have to take a right on O'Naita Street to get to Knott Street. And there's holes on that street there, I couldn't believe. I mean, if somebody could check this out, I mean, they use that street all the time to go by. I mean, I wish somebody would check that out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to have trouble with this name. Is it Sabrine?
Madam President and Councilmen and Women, I'm not used to be before you, I'm sorry. So if you don't understand, you can just ask me what I'm saying. I have a complaint. I live at 810 State Street in Schenectady, and my complaint is about the trash in that area. It's really bad. You know, the people next door throw trash in my yard. Soon as I clean it up, my brother's here, he could testify to that, soon as we clean it up, they put more trash down. On the side of the house, the landlord that owns that house, he put a panel for you not to go into the alleyway, and there's nothing but trash back there he should pick up. It's a lot of debris. And so that's the way he covered it up. So when I speak to him about these things, he does not give me any kind of response. It's almost as if I'm not saying anything to him, you know? But he does talk about the people that live there. He has fear of, yeah, of addressing the problems to them, that they might do something negative. So this is an ongoing thing. It is really sad, because, and I, they get out of their cars, and they put trash right on the ground from inside the cars. And so along the street, when it rains or snows and everything like that, you could see all this trash coming up. And then when you go down on Hewlett and State, right where the pizza shop is, it's even worse than through there at times, you know? And then the manholes, they're covered with trash all the time, so the rain really fills up in our area and causes a lot of flooding very easily. So that was my complaint, and I'm just wondering what I could do about that, because I also live there at my address, and I also have a business. I'm a hairdresser. So I have customers coming in and out looking at the trash as if I don't pick it up, but soon as you pick it up, they put more down. One day, there was lottery tickets all over the grounds.
There are cans.
Everything.
Cigarette butts.
Cigarette butts, I have them.
Bags of reefer bags.
Reefer bags, and nobody smokes. I don't smoke, and they don't smoke, my customers don't smoke, because I don't smoke. So there shouldn't be any cigarette butts right up on my steps, you know, down at the bottom. I can't, I can't get over this. But it seems like the more you try to speak to them about it, the more irate they get. So that's what I'm dealing with, and if I can get any help, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Sharon Lynn Schmidt.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, President King, City Council members. My name is Sharon Lynn Schmidt. I'm speaking tonight as a homeowner in Mount Pleasant. We do have good news. The vacancy rate in the Crane Street Business District is decreasing. We have a new beauty shop, and soon to open are a boutique, a clothing store, a cellphone store, a bar, and the diner will open soon under new management. As I worked gardening around some of the trees on Crane Street this past Saturday, I witnessed traffic and pedestrian volume, which would encourage any shop owner. We recently were privileged to have our neighborhood association, Linda McFarlane, Executive Director of Community Loan Fund, speak and talk about low-cost loans for micro businesses, homeownership and home repair, as well as not-for-profit projects. This has encouraged at least one lady who is interested in starting a cottage industry. We still need a veterinarian, a pet groomer, a dentist, an accountant, a lawyer, small manufacturing, these are examples. I think we can thank some of our city officials for the increased activity in filling our empty shops. We need to improve, however, the response time to loud music complaints in our residential areas. When we purchase a home, the deed usually comes with a covenant of quiet enjoyment of one's property. A recent incident took at least three hours of neighbors calling the dispatch center, even reaching out to the sheriff's office, to be told there were no patrol cars available. Not till about 1:00 AM did an officer become available to pay a visit to a home from which the booming and extremely high decibel of noise emanated. We don't blame the police officers who are responding to more urgent matters. They're frustrated also. But when children can't get to sleep, when neighbors are threatening each other, when good people are at the mercy of those who do not respect the rights of others, there must be a better way. Perhaps through neighborhood watch or auxiliary police, perhaps through public announcements. The laws are there to be obeyed. It's just a shame we don't have the resources to enforce them. We need to come up with a better solution. And I just want to put a plug in for a meeting tomorrow at the McChesney Room, Main Library, from 1:00 to 4:00. How do people get food in our community? I've spent a lot of hours this past week doing Mount Pleasant's resource directory for this, as well as physical activity resources, and so anyone who wants to go to that can see me. I've got the RSVP information here for Ms. Wood. Thank you.
Thank you. David Giaccoloni.
Hello again. I said I didn't want to be here, but I happened to walk by one of the new parking kiosks last week, and I'm a little worried. The, well, for 20 years, I've been telling this city that New York State has a rule, a law that specifically says, no city may make it a violation to park at a broken meter. You have an interesting new wrinkle on the kiosk. It says, if the meter is, if this meter is broken, you must go to another meter and get your receipt there. Well, I was standing over by Engelbart's, and if I wanted to get a receipt, I would have to walk to Manhattan Exchange, where there is one, and then come all the way back to wherever my car is and put it in there. That seems a little bit extreme, and it doesn't seem to be in the spirit of you may not give a ticket to a car parked at a broken meter. The other thing that I noticed, of course, is that they're all saying a dollar an hour. And there are an awful lot of people who are going to be pretty shocked that it went up, you know, quadrupled in vast part of downtown Schenectady. Last year, I said, every city that I've looked at that has done this, has told whoever is going to set the fees, how often they can raise it, and what percentage they can raise at any one time, and I bet none of them said, "You can go up 300% at once." Please talk to people like Phil Engelbart and find out what it's going to do to his business to have a dollar, to have dollar meters in front of his place that didn't used to have any. It had two spots that didn't have any meters. Now they all have meters, and it's a dollar, you can't just go for a quarter, you got to pay the dollar. And he said to me, "Why aren't they up on Union Street? I have to compete with those liquor stores." Yeah, he sure does. And I think a lot of, a lot of shop owners are going to be pretty mad, but I think a lot of the public is going to be even more angry. People are going to be parking in whatever free spot they can find. So they're going to be parking at stores where they really aren't shopping, they're going to be parking in the library lot, even though, which is always filled anyway, even though they're always done. So I think that we're seeing that the mayor may have promised to go slow, but he's not going slow when he's going up 300% at one time in dozens and dozens of spots in the city. So, once again, I hope that someday this council writes a set of policies and guidelines for how rates may be raised by the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary McLean.
I am really, really angry over this plea deal given to the rogue cop. Anyone who had something to do with it is amoral, as far as I am concerned. I have four, 14 nieces and nephews. Recently, I told you that two of them are union carpenters. Another one of my nephews holds a degree in culinary arts. One day, on his way to school, he managed to get himself into trouble. While waiting for a red light, he pointed a gun out of the vehicle's window. A policeman was behind him and saw the incident. The officer followed my nephew to campus, pulled him from the truck, cuffed him, and brought him to jail. He spent two nights in jail while his mother, until his mother could pay $10,000 bail for his release. Within four months, he was back in court and got a record for the incident. It was a toy gun. What did the Schenectady officer get for brandishing his gun? He got to stay home with pay for one year. He got to wait until he had enough time to retire before going to court. He got a paid lifetime pension plus medical coverage. His was a real gun. This is gutter politics. Schenectady Democrats do it best. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up, so I'm going to declare this portion of the meeting closed. We'll go to miscellaneous business of the council. Don't all speak at once. Ms. Porterfield?
I just have one announcement, and, oh, well, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to everyone on the city staff that donated to the project that the Young Girls for Mount Pleasant did for supplies to the girls' school in Uganda. We did have a box downstairs in the mayor's office and got some supplies as a result of that, so I want to say thank you on behalf of the girls for that. I wanted to also announce that on Sunday, July 6th, there's going to be a narrated tour in Vale Cemetery. There's a retired teacher, and I'm not going to try to pronounce his last name, his first name is Frank, who's going to tell about individuals who were involved with smuggling, runaway slaves to freedom, such as Isaac Gruyere and RPG Wright. And also, they're going to be visiting graves of some runaway slaves and two members of the U.S. Colored Troops in African-American Ancestral Burial Ground. This will take place on July 6th at 2:00 PM, and they'll meet at the Caretaker's College at 907 State Street, rain or shine. The donation is $7 per person, or for children under 12, because they want them to know history, it is free. For additional information, a person can call 346-0423. Again, that number is 346-0423. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Riggi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. What Ms. Schmidt brought up about the loud music, there's been an ongoing problem, and Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner, I CC'd you on an email I sent this morning. There's a Stewart's on the corner of Chrysler and Norwood Avenue that, it's been ongoing, there's an elderly couple that lives just about right next door, and when people pull up to the store, they leave their cars running, they leave their radios blasting, and they're really having a hard time sleeping and whatnot. I think Chief Kilcullen did talk to the manager there, but apparently, I don't know what they can really do, but I think we need some enforcement there. I mean, the husband is a World War II vet, and he's had all the Memorial and Veterans Day affairs that we go to, and I don't think it's fair that someone from the greatest generation, or any generation, should have to put up with this nonsense. I know it's ongoing throughout the city, and we are short-staffed, we need attention to things like this, especially when somebody that's a true senior citizen reaches out and asks for help. They don't know what to do. There are prisoners in their house, they can't move right now, I mean, they're in their probably mid to late 80s, and they just want some relief. They want to be able to sleep at night in peace and not have, I mean, there's a big problem with respect. We all know this with the littering and everything. There's a major problem with respect for other people throughout the nation, maybe throughout the world, I don't know. But we're interested in what's going on here in Schenectady, and this problem just goes on and on and on, and we don't seem to see relief. Litter is all over the place. Albany Street is just a mess. Albany Street. Albany Street, going right down the hill, it's just, it's awful. It's awful. We need some enforcement, I'm afraid. That's what happens. The penalty is enforcement. Without enforcement, things just go on and on and on. I know I've talked about this before, and I'll talk about it again, because without enforcement of any of the laws that we have on the books, we're just spinning our wheels. You know, we want to have a nice city, we want people to move here, we want people to send their children to school here, but quality of life is the most important thing for anyone, whatever it is, is quality of life. And most people are, they put up with quite a bit. They're not just people that complain about every little thing that goes on, but these issues like this, especially with the nice weather, they seem to manifest itself to where they are today. So I would like to see, I don't know, Commissioner, what can be done with the Stewart situation, but I'd like to see some, at least, somebody talk to the manager again, and I don't, really not sure, when somebody pulls up, I guess they could put a sign up, turn their engines off, turn your radios off. Will that help? Probably not. Again, we're going to need, I think, we're going to need some enforcement in that area when this thing is going on, so maybe the message will get through loud and clear. But it's just something that it kind of takes your heart away from you when you talk to people that have lived here all their lives, and it's really good, good people in this community that have to put up with nonsense like this. Mr. Falotico, this Union Inn problem, I don't know if you contacted anybody on it, but it's kind of, I, that's another kind of sad thing, and I'm kind of lost on it, but I know they're in arrears in their taxes right now, but they can't sell the place either because the basement's full of water, so. I don't know what happened there and with this development, but I keep hearing, and even their insurance company says that it's due to the development that happened next door, so. They're kind of innocent victims in this, the way this thing played out, and it's another sad situation that happened. And for this developer to continue on developing, I don't know, something doesn't seem right to me about this, that they're going to continue developing when there's obviously drainage problems with the development that they put up. It's another old business that's been there a long time, the Union Inn, and now they haven't paid their taxes because they're frustrated and they don't know what else to do. I think the city probably, I think they have till August 1st, from what I understand, but it's kind of sad that when things go wrong, and they have been wrong, like in this case, that something can't be done to rectify it, and that the developer, maybe he can't, maybe his feet can't be held to the fire, but I think they should, and I think we should be extra cautious when we allow this developer to continue to develop when he's causing problems. I have to say, it makes perfect sense that if you've never had a water problem in your basement, and all of a sudden a development goes up next door and you have a water problem, there's a pretty good chance it had something to do with what went on. And again, the insurance company for the person that caused the problem, apparently caused the problem, says that's the problem. So I don't know what can be done about it, but I think we have to be extra cautious in the future and really look into things of this nature. The St. Anthony's Festa was this weekend, and it was, it was well-attended, it was very good, and I don't know who went and who went inside the church there, but it's kind of sad to see what happened to that church with the fire. And they are going to rebuild, and it's going to take a lot of money, and they do have a fund set up for people that might like to donate, so if anybody doesn't have their number, contact me, or probably any other one of the council, and they can put you in touch with the people to donate to this fund, because that's one of the oldest churches in the city, and it's kind of sad when you go and see and see what happened, but I'm sure the jail restoration is going to be, doing the restoration work, I'm sure they'll do a fine job and get it back to where it belongs, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Rudverin.
Thank you. Just a few community announcements. The Mont Pleasant Neighborhood Association, summer recess, no meeting in July, but instead, volunteers will be working on summer projects to help paint the Little League fence, paint the parks, equipment, community landscaping and gardening, neighborhood cleanup. All volunteers are welcome. Please contact Sharon Lynn Schmidt, President of the Mont Pleasant Neighborhood Association, at 393-2116, or 956-2458. The Schenectady County Library Program on 99 Clinton Street will be hosting the following programs for children. Under Trees, 9:30 a.m., Mondays, from July 7th to August 11th, registration is open. Preschool Story Hour, 10:30 a.m., Tuesdays, from July 8th to August 12th, no registration is required. Toddler Time, 9:30 a.m., Wednesdays, from July 9th to August 13th, registration begins Wednesday. And the Baby Lab Time, 9:30 a.m., Thursdays, from July 10th to August 14th, registration begins Thursday. The Duane Bunch Library at 1331 State Street will offer the following programs. Under Fives, summer storytime from 11 a.m. on Tuesdays, and the Reading Magic Show for children in grades K to 5 from 3:00 p.m. Thursdays, no registration is required. I encourage our kids to please attend these events. It's very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, and I should have mentioned, I know the mayor is on his way back, okay, Mr. Kosher, I'm sorry.
Way back to the meeting here? Well, we'll just do a little work here. Thank you, Madam President. Just a few announcements, obviously. School is out this Thursday, last day of school, so just to have our drivers beware of the children walking and driving bicycles throughout our community. Several of our pools will be open this weekend as well. The Central Park Pool is actually opening up this Friday, and the other three pools, Front Street, Quackenbush, and Hillhurst are opening up on Monday. Now, I was on my phone trying to text with Julie Rouse from the Boys and Girls Club. I do not have the hours, if Tony's still here, I don't have the hours of the small parks or their pool hours yet, but I'm sure we can work to maybe put those on our website for all our folks as well, in addition to all that. And as I mentioned, Sicum, the free lunches are starting Monday as well at all our area parks, so they begin at 11:30 serving, and they go all the way through 2 o'clock in the afternoon. So please feel free to bring our youngsters to that, 18 and younger only, and you have to eat the meals at the park site as well. But it's a great program that Reverend Grisby and the Sicum community and volunteers work on endlessly. Something Mr. Riggi and myself worked on, something new at Hillhurst this year, and the council further approved as well. We have some additional parking now on Campbell Avenue, which is going to be parallel to the side where Hillhurst Pool is. In, for the last 15 or plus years, there's been no parking on the north side of Campbell Avenue, and we worked through the council, and Mr. Riggi and myself actually went and met with some of the neighbors and visited. So now we're going to be able to have parking on both sides of Campbell Avenue, which will be right from where the park starts, all the way down westbound to 12th Avenue, I believe it is. And that's going to free up about 15, 16 parking spots for our folks. In previous years, we only had parking on the south side of Campbell Avenue, and believe it or not, it was only parking for three vehicles. So it made it very difficult for our young families who were bringing children to the park, to unload their children and park near the park, and what they're doing, believe it or not, is parking in the handicap park inside the park area itself, because we just didn't have any other parking available. So thanks to the council for the support, and of course, to John Cruchill for working on that for us, and I think that's going to be a big improvement to really get some good usage out of Hillhurst Pool. As the Director of the Youth Bureau, needless to say, we have been receiving numerous, numerous phone calls about camp and program opportunities at, for our youth as they're getting out of school. Folks are just realizing, oh my goodness, school is ending. So a few that are still accepting applications are the Camp Love Joe with the Boys and Girls Club, Girls Inc. is still out there, the YMCA, the Youth Bureau runs a SCORE Summer Camp, Learning Camp at Central Park. We are maxed out at 200 students this year, and all those camps begin on Monday. But certainly, contact the Youth Bureau, contact our office if you need any additional information, folks are out there. Most folks do have scholarships or sliding fee scale for some families, and our number at the Youth Bureau is 386-2211, and we also have some information on our website as well. And again, I think that's, the other party piece is art programs at Steymitz and Woodlawn Park this year, too, two brand-new additions. So again, thanks to the community-developed block grant funding that we received, we will have some recreational and educational programs going at almost every one of our major parks in the city of Schenectady, including Jerraburrell, Quackenbush. But our new addition, of course, is the Woodlawn Park, and that'll be operated three days a week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, from 11 a.m. until 5 p.m., and it's going to be in conjunction with the Boys and Girls Club of Schenectady, and we have an outstanding young lady, her name is Sheila Dixon. Some of you folks might remember that name, who are Schenectady High School alumni. She was a Division One, is the Division One, basketball All-American, grew up right here and born and raised in Schenectady. She'll be working with us at the camp, and she's going to be playing pro basketball in a women's league overseas this fall. So if you want to come down and learn some skills and just to meet Sheila, we'd appreciate that. So again, have a good week, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Perezso.
Just a quick announcement, that the new bathhouse and area over in Steymitz Park, they're having ribbon cutting this weekend, Sunday, right, correct? At 11:30, and also their neighborhood picnic, but it's, if you haven't seen it yet, it's a wonderful new addition to the neighborhood and Goose Hill.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I started to say Mayor McCarthy was at the Conference of Mayors down in Dallas and ran into flight issues coming back today, so Commissioner Bennett is here with us. Commissioner, anything that you wanted to say?
No, ma'am, he's safely back in town.
Oh, he is? Okay. Good. And I just wanted to announce on Monday, June 30th, at 11 a.m., we're going to be having a neighborhood code compliance review kickoff. This is going to involve Schenectady Police Fire Code Enforcement, as well as the Animal Control Team, as this will also be the start of our dog enumeration kickoff. So hopefully, many of us can be there and, as I said, get things going for the summer. And if there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Kosher, second of my Mr. Erickson, all in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.[1776.42]